Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Is there a closed session report, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session to discuss the matters reflected on their agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Okay, City Clerk, call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Please stand, and Councilmember Gardner will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing. I will lead the invocation.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father and God, we come to you today as your humble servants. We come to you in our capacity as stewards for the people of Newport Beach. We ask that you would make us good stewards, that you would imbue us with your wisdom, with your compassion, with your kindness, and with your ability to have empathy to all of those in our community, particularly those who are hurting in these troubled times. In your name we pray. Amen. Tonight, we have three presentations. The first will be by Mothers Against Drunk Driving, awards to Newport Beach Police Officers Fitzpatrick and Miller. Please come forward.
Thank you. To the mayor of this fine city and the council. My name is Gail Butler. I am the executive director of Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and it is my pleasure to be here tonight to honor two of Newport Beach's finest. Mothers Against Driving has as its mission to stop drunk driving, assist the victims of this violent crime, and reduce underage drinking. Law enforcement is our natural partner in that effort, and we take every occasion to honor and pay respect to those who have done so much for so many who don't even know who they are. Tonight, we are honoring two officers, and we have a very short resolution that we have developed to express what this means. It has been resolved by the DEUCE Awards Committee of the Orange County Chapter of Mothers Against Drunk Driving that the following officers be honored for exemplary service to the community and the apprehension of 25 or more impaired drivers in the calendar year of 2009. Twenty-five arrests is significant in a community the size of this. And the first person I'd like to call is Officer Brad Miller. And you are here already. Don't have to call far. This is Officer Miller's first DEUCE award. DEUCE is our term for 25. However, it is his second commendation by MADD. Last year, he had the distinct honor of being one of our century award winners, which meant he made 100 or more DUI arrests in the course of the calendar year. We have upgraded this year, thanks to a grant. And here you go. And you're a pet. I'm sure you have at least one other. Thank you so much. And here comes Officer Mark Fitzpatrick.
Unfortunately, Officer Fitzpatrick just had a baby and could be here tonight, so I'll be happy to accept it. I'm sorry? Yeah, I misspoke. Yes, sir.
Okay. And accepting on his behalf is Captain Dale Johnson. I will mention that this is Officer Fitzpatrick's fourth DEUCE award, and he has the further distinction of being Newport Beach's top DUI arresting officer for the calendar year. So please give him a warm round of applause as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. As was noted, this last year, Officer Fitzpatrick made 64 arrests, Officer Miller 59 arrests, and it goes to show how important it is to enforce the DUI laws on our streets, how dangerous it can be without the strong enforcement that we have in Newport Beach. And we surely appreciate the Mothers Against Drunk Driving recognizing our officers and the great job that our officers do in protecting our streets. The next proclamation is one that I have a delight in making. It goes to a citizen of our city, but more than that, a citizen of the world, the host of the coast. If I could ask Henry Sheilin to come forward, and I'm going to read this proclamation while he does so. Whereas Henry Sheilin was born in Bavaria in 1934, and in January 1957 arrived in America aboard the USS America; and whereas Henry Sheilin's career path began in 1949 as a waiter's apprentice, and he started working at his first real job in 1952 at the Grand Hotel, also known as the Berchengartnerhof in Berchtesgarten, Bavaria; and whereas in 1954, Henry Sheilin joined the Clipper Line of Malmo, Sweden as a dining room steward for the luxury line Stella Polaris, cruising from New Orleans to South America, the Caribbean, and the Mediterranean Sea; and whereas Henry Sheilin's four-decade career at top hotels around the world includes the Hong Kong Hilton, the Manila Hilton, the Rama Hilton, Bangkok, Thailand, and the Pfister Hotel and Tower in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, the Sheraton Blackstone in Chicago, the Ritz-Carlton Boston and Laguna Nigal, and the Grand Wailea Resort Hawaii; and whereas Henry Sheilin has led the Balboa Bay Club and Resort for 15 years, working closely with ownership to rebuild, recreate, and rebrand a 50-plus-year tradition on the California Riviera; and whereas Henry Sheilin, President and Chief Operating Officer of the Balboa Bay Club and Resort Newport Beach, California, has been named one of the finest hoteliers worldwide by the American Academy of Hospitality Sciences, now I therefore Keith D. Curry, Mayor of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize and congratulate Henry Sheilin on his 60-year career in the hospitality industry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it.
Well, first of all, Your Honor and distinguished council members, this is much more a pleasure than coming here to get a permit. Fifteen years ago that I joined the Balboa Bay Club, I didn't think I would be here that long. But I'm having so much fun. People ask me, when do you think of retiring? You say, no idea. So now I've got 60 years in the wonderful business of hospitality, and I'm getting ready for the next 60. So I'm gonna come around next time for another honor down the road.
Well deserved.
But it's a real pleasure to be here in Newport Beach. This is such a great place, such a great city, wonderful people. I really love it here. My wife says, we've been moving all our life, as he never could hold a job. She says, if next time you move, I'm not coming. So I'm stuck. Thank you so very much for this great honor. Thank you. It's a pleasure being with you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Justin Myers from the Newport Beach Sister City Committee, who's here with some distinguished basketball players from France. Ben Diddy.
Good evening, City Council. We have a great group of young athletes who've traveled here from Antibes, Juan de la Bonn, France, our sister city. And this is a kickoff of our 20th anniversary of our relationship with our sister city. And these boys, it's been one of their dreams to be able to come here to the States and visit Newport and play basketball with our kids. And we have a game on Friday evening at 5:00 p.m. at Cronomar High School, and they're gonna be playing against Cronomar Middle School. They've spent all day today at Ensign and have many more fun activities planned for their stay. And I think the coaches have something as well.
La municipalité d'Antibes, le club de basket d'Antibes vous remercie de nous avoir permis de réaliser ce projet, de pouvoir emmener ses dix enfants à Newport Beach et de réaliser leurs rêves de jeunesse.
Okay, the city of Antibes, the basketball club of Antibes is thanking the Newport Beach community to enable those kids, those basketball players, to realize their dream, the dream of their life coming to the United States.
Nous remercions particulièrement aussi Pascal et Justine de nous accompagner et de nous avoir épaulés dans ce projet depuis le début.
They want to thank Justin and myself for having been able to put that together for them.
Et nous remercions aussi beaucoup et très fort toutes les familles qui ont reçu et qui reçoivent actuellement les enfants.
And they're thanking as well all the families that are hosting the children.
Et nous espérons pouvoir rendre la même chose quand les petits, enfin, les enfants américains viendront à Antibes.
And they're hoping to be able to give back to the children or the students of Newport Beach when they'll be going in Antibes at the end of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you very much. Keith, what about having each one of them just walk by the microphone and say their name as they go back to their seats?
All right, let's take a picture.
Hello. My name is Quentin. I'm 12 years old.
My name is Arthur. I'm 12 years old.
My name is Tom. I'm 12 years old.
My name is Arno. I'm 13.
I'm Tom, and I'm 13 too.
I'm Thomas, and I'm 13.
Hello. My name is Jean-Philippe, and I have 13 years old.
My name is Tom. I'm 13.
My name is Mathieu, and I have 13.
My name is Damien, and I'm 12.
We just want to thank the city and all of its citizens for all of their warm support of our sister city program. And without everybody in the city of Newport and all the great friendships we have with this program and these students, none of this would be possible. And we thank you all for your support of our program.
Thank you, Justin. It's a great program, and I encourage everybody that can to go out to Cronomar High School tomorrow at 5 o'clock to watch a great basketball game. Friday, excuse me, Friday, and watch a great basketball game. Thank you. Notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for a discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, I wanted to pass on to citizens some information that we learned at the Finance Committee yesterday. And certainly with the budget, there's a lot of action this year at the Finance Committee. And for the first time since 1978, per the county assessor, there will be a negative adjustment for property values from the state as well as counties. And so this means that your taxes may be going down. And basically, the state is imposing a negative 0.24% CPI, and this negative CPI will affect every parcel in the county. Of course, there's another side of the coin, and that is that this will negatively impact revenues to the city, which, of course, go to fund the services that we deliver to the community. And so compared to most years when we were capped at a 2% increase, this is a significant shift, a minimum of a 2.24% swing in property tax revenues. And the county assessor also told the city that approximately 20% of its single-family condo parcels were reassessed in 2009, which means lowered assessments on these properties. So again, the good news is for citizens is that your property tax may be lower this year. And all of these numbers that I'm sharing with you are publicly available and verifiable through our Finance Department. So thank you.
Yes, I had some problems with trees. And so I'm wondering, based on some questions I've had from residents, whether we could have at some point, there's not a huge rush on it, but a presentation from our General Services Department on particularly interested in when they prune the roots and everything, how we ascertain that the tree is, just tree safety issues in general. I think that would be helpful because they're questions that come up. And then there was also a question about, just in general, with the homeowner and the parkway. And I asked the city attorney, and I have noticed that since you came here, Mr. City Attorney, nothing is clear anymore. That this was another area that seems to be needing cleaning up a bit. So I would appreciate it if we could get something back at some point after you've had a chance to look at it, and make sure that we're very clear in what we're requiring and what we demand of our homeowners.
Absolutely. And that's only because I'm so precise in all of my actions.
That's what I meant, of course.
Yes, at the December council meeting, I announced that to commemorate my last year on the council, I was gonna walk the city again, and I thought I'd give you a progress report. Since December 8, I've walked 130 miles and covered about two-thirds of the streets easterly of MacArthur Boulevard, and I'm well on the way of accomplishing it within a year.
Mr. Selich?
I have nothing.
Mr. Rosansky?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Henn?
Yes, I've been participating with a group of volunteer citizens assessing safety on the Oceanfront Walk, and I think that the issue is now matured to the point where we can come back to council at a study session sometime soon with some, what I think are final recommendations for council to consider and provide guidance to staff on. So if we can arrange for that at a study session sometime soon, I'd appreciate it.
Two quick items. I attended a retirement reception for city employees who had taken our early retirement program. The city is losing a tremendous amount of talent, and it's a real tribute to the city staff who are remaining that have the ability to backfill those jobs and to continue to provide the great services that people have come to enjoy and expect from the city. But it was also great to see so many people who have had such long service with the city and who have made such a great contribution to the city. And certainly, it's appropriate to honor their contribution over the years to what we have here on Newport Beach. I also had the pleasure to attend the police promotions ceremony on the 3rd of February. And I want to commend Chief Lumen, who has really done a good job, I think, at getting back with the department and restoring credibility into the promotions process. And I think he's selected some outstanding young men for leadership, and I think that's well reflected in the promotions that were made. Consent Calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 10, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have any items they wish to pull from the consent calendar? Councilmember Daigle? Councilmember Gardner?
Number 10, and also I have a correction to the minutes. Page, volume 59, page 386, Roman numeral 15, second paragraph. Towards the end, it talks about treasurer Jack Skinner. That should be, I must have said he was treasured, as invaluable. He's not a treasurer of anything, so I'm sorry if I didn't articulate well.
Thank you. Councilmember Webb?
None.
Councilmember Selich?
Nothing.
Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protim Henn?
None.
And I have none. Does staff have any items to pull?
No, sir.
Does anyone from the public have any items to pull from the consent calendar?
There's a card from Mike McNamara, but it involves item 10, which Councilmember Gardner pulled.
Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on any item that has not been pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved that we approve the items on the consent calendar, items 1 through 10, except for item 10, which has been pulled, and to note the corrections to the minutes that Councilmember Gardner proposed.
Second. Moved and seconded. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
We're now at item 10, recommendations for the Water Taxi Exploratory Committee. Councilmember Gardner?
The recommendation certainly is innocuous enough just to include the questions exploring the demand and support. But it was such an interesting discussion, and it seemed to go no place in terms of what we're looking to do. I agree that seeing if there's a need or a demand is important. But I wasn't sure, I know we had, did the Harbor Commission, were they the ones that looked at this? And is this the basis of their report?
Both the Harbor Commission and the Economic Development Committee looked at it.
I know we had a study session on it, didn't we?
Yes, and after the study session, both of those bodies looked at it. The Economic Development The Economic Development Committee supported a request for proposal, but they also suggested that there be some kind of a survey to gauge the support and demand for the water taxi. And then the Harbor Commission took no action. They received and filed the report.
Okay. All right, well, I just was curious because it didn't seem to ask very much. But if that's what came out of the committee, then I'm satisfied.
Mayor Protim Hin?
Actually, I was intending to pull this item, too, because I, I do think that there is action to be taken. But I would not recommend the action to be taken at the, at the end of the, at the end of the staff report. It seems to me that there was, the Economic Development Committee did think we should perform some sort of survey work to gauge the level of interest before it became, before we went to the point of an RFP and it matured back to council for action. And so, and there was some discussion in here about possibly adding a, a line or two to the survey, the citizen survey that we're, as far as I know, intending to do very shortly. And that would be an easy, inexpensive way to gain some survey information.
That is the recommendation. I think you may be looking at the alternatives.
Which is a confusing thing. We add to the staff report sometimes when we offer you alternatives that maybe you don't want to hear.
Well, never mind.
All right, I think Mr. McNamara had to ask to speak. Mike, if you want to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mike McNamara. I think I know a number of you here. I'm the chairman of the Summer Water Taxi Exploratory Committee. I don't know if I can get it all in in five. Do I have to stick with that? Can I have a couple more? Just a little bit of history, as you know, the Water Taxi Committee was formed in May of 2009, and the report was finished by November. The city council reviewed it on November 24th and accepted the Water Taxi Committee recommendation to refer it to the EDC and the Harbor Commission. And as Sharon just mentioned, the EDC supported it. Harbor Commission voted to receive and file. And I know there were individual members who had certain concerns about it and were discussed. And some of them may or may not represent the, the body as a whole. You have before you today really two different roads. One is the staff recommendation, and one is the, the committee recommendation. And in your packet there, you'll see the, the recommendations. And I'd like to kind of talk about those. One is to refer the report to a piece of the study surveying the residents and businesses. I thought it was a good idea and had some merit, so I posed questions such as, what do you think if we ask questions like, do you favor water taxi? Would you favor, would you do it if the fare was $1? Would you do it if it's $2, or $4, or $6, or perhaps $4 per person and $1 per kid, something of that nature? In talking to staff, they said that would be difficult to include that many questions because of the number of services that needed to be analyzed. And you can only keep someone, someone on the phone for so long when you're doing a survey. I conclude that the survey would be worth doing if we had two things, the right questions and the right people to interview. The residents and businesses are a small portion of those who we expect would ride the taxi. Not a sampling, just the residents and businesses. We need a reasonable cross-section of those who will use it during the summertime. I think the city has an opportunity at this point to enter into a genuine public-private partnership with entrepreneurs to establish the viable Summer Water Taxi Committee. I'm sorry, Summer Water Taxi Service for Newport Harbor. Information you might not be aware of is, number one, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is willing to support the Summer Water Taxi ID with about a $10,000 advertising budget. And I talked to Gary Sherwin. They're willing to consider allocating some of it towards the study. And in talking with him, he said the Convention Bureau and Visitors Bureau favor a quicker action to amp up the program sooner. And I've been contacted by three potential operators tonight a fourth who are willing to, who are interested in, and consider, will consider submitting a proposal without a subsidy. And the people that have given me the permission to mention their names. There's Hank Weisner, who runs the Fund Zone Harbor Tours. He took a struggling business and turned it into a successful operation. Ms. Chan, Mrs., Ms. Chandelier, who's the owner of Lear Boats. She's the daughter of Bill Lear, who developed the Learjet in record time. And I think Shanda has some of the same genes. And Mr. Fred Hirschman, who runs the successful and profitable Water Taxi Service in Santa Barbara. In talking with Chandler Bell, I just sat down next to him, Hornblower Yachts is interested, too. So a number of these are local entities that are interested in, and not everyone agrees that it should be without subsidy, but they're at least interested in talking about it. So I would ask you not to send the survey to a process that asks the wrong people the wrong questions. And I think we need to find a cross-section of people who will be here. And if, if it's necessary to, if you need to slow it down, I, I sat through your budget hearing the other, you know, yesterday. And I recognize you have a lot of serious problems amongst them, stretching staff too far. And if you feel you need to slow it down, I would suggest we do the survey in the summertime when we can ask the right people the right questions. I would also ask, secondly, that you consider our recommendation to test the market with an RFP. Entrepreneurs have an uncanny sense of self-preservation and quickly can get to something whether it's going to work or not. And number three, let the Water Taxi Committee take some of the pressure off staff by preparing the scope of services of the RFP with staff handling the water plate language and the overall coordination responsibility for the project. With that, that's my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
I, I think it's an excellent point about the survey and how it's raised. Because obviously, if you ask people, would you like a water taxi? They're like, sure. But that doesn't really provide the information needed. So I think that's a critical part of how it's approached. I also was interested, not everybody who responded to your questions as far as being interested in being the purveyor of the service necessarily required a subsidy. Was that, did I understand you?
They, they basically all said they would be willing to consider a proposal without a subsidy. And they knew that was the ground rules. And that's what we had told them. When they contacted me, that's what I told them. Right now, the ground rules are no subsidy. And, and the recommendation was not to recommend a subsidy to this, to this council because of the situation the city's in.
So then I guess my next question would be to, to Mike, and as far as the Economic Development Committee, there was, your group was in agreement that you were going to wait? You want to do the survey first and not just look out and see what was, what might be the result of an RFP?
I think that was the fundamental, I don't think we actually took a vote to that effect. But that's my sense of the group, was that they would, they would prefer to have solid support in a survey before moving forward with an RFP. And, and my sense of it at this juncture is it's going to be pretty hard to do that and make it happen in 2010. So my thought would be that, especially if we can find one or more entities that would subsidize the cost of a survey that, to be done the way you think it ought to be done, that might be a viable way to go. Or in the event that we find money that has been identified in the budget for Economic Development Committee that we know now is not going to be spent, maybe there's some opportunity there, too. But especially if other entities would be willing to support the cost of the survey, and if the Water Taxi Committee will do the yeoman work in terms of structuring that with participation from staff. I think that's a template, by the way, generally, that we may be looking at more and more often as we go forward here in the city. And so I'd be willing to support an idea like that. But Mike, I don't know if there is enough financial support to actually get a survey done the way you'd like to do it without relying upon city money. Do you have a sense of whether that's a viable opportunity?
I, I don't have any identified sources other than talking to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I don't know if we could get someone at UCI to chip in. I think probably it would be helpful if our committee or, or some group dealt with the question of, you know, what are the correct questions to ask? How do we want to do it? And, you know, who do we want to survey? How do we want to survey? And if it, and if it goes into the summertime, that's probably not a bad thing in terms of surveying it. But, and again, as I was saying, we still have people that are willing to take a hard look at it. I think they would take a much harder look if we, if we could show that, yes, there is a lot of interest.
And it may be very convenient and much less expensive to do a survey during the summer while people are there, and you can simply hand them something as opposed to even, I imagine Seymour Beek might be willing to, you know, allow the use of his people to hand out surveys and collect them, or whatever. Maybe there's a solution there that really reduces the cost.
Well, perhaps to the, the rental agencies that have a lot of the TOT units that are available. Maybe they'd be interested in handing them out to the clients. Because I think in reality, it'd be the people that, you know, don't have transportation or that don't want to move their cars and park it in their garage. That would seem to be the people that might have some use for it.
Let me, let me just make an observation that, first of all, Mike, I thought the report that was done by the Citizens Committee on Water Taxi was bar none. The best citizens' report that has been submitted to the council in the four years that I've sat up here. It was an excellent piece of research that I think the entire committee should be very proud of.
Thank you on behalf of the committee.
Well, well deserved. And I think, I think you made some very salient observations tonight. I think this is, if we're going to do a survey, it probably ought to be done in the summertime. And it probably, as Mike suggested, could be done with people with clipboards, you know, talking to people in the Fund Zone around the island or who are here visiting our tourist amenities to get a sense. And I think the salient questions are, how much are you willing to pay? The testimony that I have heard, both at EDC and here, is, is that it's highly challenging to run this service without a subsidy. And as you have observed, I don't see that there's a subsidy in the budget given the current conditions that we have now. Given that reality, if EDC can work with, with your group and with the city staff to devise a means to do this, then perhaps in the summertime, we should, we should look at it on a sort of a go-slow approach and then come back to that to the extent that we see economic viability on the basis of that survey. Councilmember Gardner?
I just, I'm a little concerned that we can do a survey but not know what we're offering. You know, you're surveying, what, you're going to have three stops? You're going to have a stop every time you want to get off the boat? I mean, there's a big difference in what we, we could be offering. And without having any idea of what some of these people who are stepping forward might be thinking in terms of service, I think it makes it very difficult to shape the questions. So I'm wondering if there shouldn't be at least some discussions. Obviously, we don't want to ask for somebody to go through the expense of a whole RFP process if there's no chance that it's going to happen. But I would think that they could provide at least some information as to how they envision it that would make the questions we ask meaningful. Because, as I say, if it just duplicates what the ferry does, that's not it. It's going to cover the whole bay or part of the bay. That would make a big difference in how people reacted to it.
Councilmember Daigle?
Well, there is an alternative to a structured RFP process. You know, presumably, the survey data would help guide the staff towards an RFP. And that would be an RFI, a request for information, in which these intrupinores would propose what they think is going to work. You know, that's, that's a valid approach to getting information.
Would someone like to offer a motion? Councilmember Protim Hin?
I'll take crack. I, I would move that we defer the distribution of an RFP for a water taxi service until at the earliest in advance of the 2011 summer season. And that in the 2010 summer season, the Water Taxi Committee work with some of the interested parties to structure a survey that we think has the right questions and with the right template to conduct, hopefully, with some support from private parties for the cost of it. I think that captures...
Motion, is there a second?
Second that.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Wait a minute, Mike.
Could I just add? We, we're set to term out to sunset. I think it's May or June. I can't remember when, May.
We can fix that.
If you're going to need our help this summer, you might want to extend it.
We can fix that.
We'll, we'll address that at the Economic Development Committee.
All right, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Time for all reports from council members on committee activities. We'll start with Councilmember Selich.
No reports this evening.
Councilmember Rosansky?
I am without reports.
Mayor Protim Hin?
Fortunately, I am with reports. They're both basically on the same subject. It's budget time around the city, and the Economic Development Committee at their last meeting had a rather extensive presentation from Dan Matusiewicz. Matusiewicz? No, no, it's Matusiewicz. I'm going to get that right. In any event, it was a presentation with regard to how we are doing this fiscal year compared to budget. It was an eye-opening presentation and was a good segue into the Finance Committee's meeting yesterday, at which we had a very detailed discussion of our budget process for the next fiscal year, the one that begins in, on July 1st of 2010, and the challenges that we have because there is a, a large and larger structural gap associated with the city's finances. And by structural gap, I mean ongoing shortfall between revenues and expenses the way we currently do business here in the city and with the programs that we plan. And that gap is large, but not near as large as some other cities. It is certainly a solvable gap, and, but it's going to require real tenacity of purpose and some creativity and fortitude here to close it the right way. And I'm confident that we will and that staff is taking a strong leadership position in this respect. And I look forward to a successful outcome of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle?
No reports.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Webb?
I have none.
And I have just one brief report. The City Charter Update Commission held its inaugural meeting on February 2nd under the leadership of Marion Bergerson. It's a very distinguished group of citizens. They moved with dispatch on the first items before them. They will be meeting on a regular schedule and considering additional items, and later formulating a recommendation back to the city council that we will then review and, and vote to approve and submit to the voters for the November election. But that process is well underway, and we have really selected an outstanding group of people for that committee. Public comments. Madam City Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comments tonight? Seeing none. Item 11, approval of contract to purchase one ladder truck and two fire engines from Pierce Manufacturing of Appleton, Wisconsin. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members. Item 11 involves the purchase of three different fire apparatus from Pierce. Because it's such a substantial purchase, I wanted to ask the fire chief and the Director of General Services, I believe is here, if you had questions about it. Our recommendation is to approve the purchase, but again, Chief Lewis and Mark Carman are both here for questions.
Well, Chief, let me begin. A million dollars is a lot of money for fire trucks in today's fiscal environment. So tell us why this is an expenditure that needs to be made today.
Mayor, council, as you know, we came before you in March of 2007. We asked initially for a truck, and you approved it at that time. And then we were working with American of France, and obviously, unfortunately for that company, they began, went bankrupt. And so we began the process again of looking anew at another engine, the, at another truck. The truck and the two engines are both on the normal replacement cycle that we have for our apparatus. And as you know, we, we have no necessarily template, though we have a standard that the industry uses. Engines are 10 years, trucks are 15, and rescues are six years. Though that's just a arbitrary number. We obviously try to squeeze everything we can out of our engines, and we don't use any timeframe, per se. That's a nice template, but as you look at all the numbers, when we retire our apparatus, they're well, well over those numbers. The two engines that we're looking to retire are 14 years old and 15 years old. And we think we've squeezed enough out of them. And a lot of that is determined by talking with General Services and ourselves. How often are they going into the shop? How much money are we now putting into them? But regularly, General Services talks to us on these two engines. In fact, the two we were asking for this time were really scheduled for last year. But General Services came and said, can we defer until this year? I said, sure. You guys are the ones repairing them. We can keep them moving. I'm fine with that. moving. I'm fine with that. The truck is 16 years old. It is getting to the end of its lifespan. The shop does a great job keeping it working. We're finding that it is, with increased frequency, going to the shop. And before we get to the end of its lifespan, I would like to put it back into reserve because we have no backup reserve now for the trucks. So when one goes into the shop, we absolutely have nothing, which really kind of handicaps us operationally. And so I'd like to put it in the reserve. So I think we can extend it for a lot longer than if we were to keep it in the front line. I think it would be, wouldn't be too long here. We would be out of service entirely and be incapacitated. So I'd like to put it into reserve status so that we can actually use it for a longer timeframe, and it would be a reserve. And all three of these are, you know, are the Internal Service Fund has monies to cover them. As you can see from the staff report, you know, with time, these apparatus are becoming more expensive, and so that'll have to be adjusted. But this is just a normal time replacement, and that's why we're coming before you to see if we can do them all at once.
Thank you. Any questions for the Chief? Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Bring it back to the councils. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item 12, wastewater pump station rehabilitation.
This item, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, involves another significant contract. In the total amount is 2.2 million, so I wanted to make sure it wasn't something you just went through on the consent calendar. If you did have any questions, I know, sorry, it involves wastewater pump station rehabilitation. Those are always significant projects for us that are funded out of the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. Public Works Director Steve Badham helps manage this. So if you had any questions, I know Steve's happy to answer those.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Badham?
I noticed in the report, it said that it's 3% lower than your estimate. Lately, we've been having them come in a lot lower than that. Is that because you're doing lower estimates because of the bidding environment?
Yes, you're correct. And we have been seeing prices drop, so we're making, we're adjusting our expectations. As you see here, though, we are asking to do a budget amendment out of the sewer, of the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. So we originally thought about this project, it was going to be much smaller, but the prices actually came in good enough that we thought, well, we should take care of all of these stations with this project. This, I might add that this, with this project, we'll have completed updates to all of our wastewater pump stations. So we're in very good shape when this is completed.
Any other questions?
I think that we ought to note that one of the five stations is across the street from my mayor's house, so he'll be well taken care of.
Not quite as sexy as fire engines, but we try.
Okay. Is it 500 feet?
Might be.
From an olive sting. I didn't know. Thank you.
I thought it was.
Well, is there a motion?
I'll move the action.
Second. Please vote.
With Mayor Curry abstaining, the motion carries.
Item 13, council approval of goals and projects along with the implementation plan for the city council's 2010 priorities. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. There's an attachment A to your staff report, but this is our attempt, staff's attempt, to develop at least a short work plan with, generally where we put in milestones with some dates and comments about the project based on that goal-setting session that you held in January. I could go through attachment A. I have a couple of changes to it, but I also am cognizant of time, and hopefully you've had a chance.
I've read it.
It's very late for us.
You did an excellent job.
I figured that's what some might say. So I did have a couple of changes I might make with you, but please feel free to ask any questions you might have as I make the changes. One of them is on page five, attachment A, performance measurement. We're going to bring a quarterly report back to you in March, March 23rd, sorry, March 9th, and that's due to our consultants' vacation. Didn't know consultants could have vacation. And then on page eight, the Mariners Mile Line, the city attorney has advised me that with the conversation with Public Works, the complete abatement date should be November to December. And so I guess I take that amendment seriously, but I may still have some conversations with Public Works about whether we could speed that up.
I'm sorry, Dave, what item are you on here?
Sorry, I'm on page eight, item two, Mariners Mile, abating nuisances. The column with milestone with dates. It says complete abatement by July. Public Works, as you know, has a lot on its plate. So if we can find some other way to do this, we might be able to speed that up. Contracting out, and the city attorney needs to comment.
No, I just want to, I want to fall on my sword. When I gave that original July date, I hadn't conferred with Public Works, and I had the time to confer with Public Works about it. And based upon their work schedule and their availability and the difficulty of bidding and stuff, a more realistic timeframe is November, December. I don't like to back up other departments, and I frankly was flying by the seat of my pants when I said July. Of course, we will try and make it happen as soon as possible. We do have certain constraints we have to follow with respect to bidding and such, and we'll do the best we can to get it down. Just for your information also, and I hold in my hand the filed lawsuit against them for abating that nuisance, but it's an operational expense and difficulty of getting a project of that size completed.
And you're referring to that property between Dover and McDonald's?
Yes, the Dover PCH property, yes.
Let me observe that, as I counted them, there are 46 action items here. And while this is going to be a year that's dominated by our concern over the budget and by the steps that we take to address the budget, and many of those are included amongst the 46 steps, nonetheless, it is a robust plan for action to improve the community, to make the investments that we need to keep Newport Beach strong, growing, and prosperous, and to enhance the quality of life that we enjoy in this community. And so I really want to commend staff for its work in putting together these goals the way they have and these six value statements that really define our community, and in the 46 action steps of how we're going to make it a better place to live over the course of 2010. Mayor Proton Hen?
I'd be glad to defer to Councilmember Gardner. I have several questions.
Okay, thank you. I just, I have one concern, and it is the, I have lots of concerns on this, the citizen satisfaction survey. This seems to me, I mean, obviously, we want to know that we're doing a decent job, but we are going to be going through, we are starting, but we haven't finished restructuring city government. And I think we should delay on this for a couple of reasons. One, to give everything time to settle in, so we're actually surveying what is instead of what we think might be. Secondly, because if we are in the kind of budget time that we seem to be in, I think that our residents would rather have money spent on things. If it's going to cost 20, 50, $100,000, whatever it costs, to put that money into road construction or potholes and that, rather than just what they think. It's not that we shouldn't do it at some point, but I would just assume, particularly when I look at this and where it says, are there resources? That's to be determined. We're not even sure we have the necessary staff resources to really do this. So that would be my suggestion of one thing that we could remove from this and delay until, certainly for a year, with no bad effect to the city, and also, as I say, perhaps a better look at the city after we have reorganized completely.
Mayor Proton Hen?
Well, to respond to that point, I actually do have a bit of a different view. I think it's very important that we establish a baseline of customer satisfaction before we engage in all of this change, so that we have a good comparison point after this change is made. How did that move the needle here in terms of what our citizens think of us and how we're running the city?
Well, I just would say that I thought that was what our first one was for, to establish the benchmark, so.
But that was over two years ago. We have a brand-new city manager. In fact, pretty substantively, we have a new executive staff or will for the city. And I'd like that, you know, we've got a new city manager, relatively, well, you've passed your first anniversary. I guess you're not a newbie anymore, David, but pretty new. We are going to have a new assistant city manager, a new police chief, a new fire chief. I could probably, a new administrative services director. I mean, almost the entire executive staff of the city is going to change. And I just think it's good to have a fresh, contemporaneous, baseline view of the world before we engage in all of this change with all of these new players. And so the cost, I think, is nominal, really. It's 35, 40, $40,000, $45,000 maybe. And we've done it once before, so I did have the same question about why we didn't think we had the resources. It seems to me it's not a very big undertaking to get it done. But, you know, I suppose there's a lot of not very big undertakings that you need to deal with.
There's a lot to pile up.
So I'm happy to hear from the city manager responding to both Councilmember Gardner and myself on our points of view.
On that item, councilmembers, I wouldn't mind adopting this with the TBD and letting me look at that over the next month, because a lot more will come through over the next month. We could still pull the trigger on the survey if we'd like to do it, because I would get it going still by June. But I'm really watching our budget actions and our own budget during this period. I think it was about $30,000 to $35,000, but we don't have to develop the questions anymore.
If I'm the only one that has hesitations about it, I mean, I don't know that that becomes an issue, but.
Well, I think Councilmember Gardner raised a good point, but I think by the time we get to July or mid-year, we will have made many of the changes that we're going to try and measure, and we will have sort of done what we need to do relative to the budget, and we'll have something that can be measured at that point in time. So I think it's probably better to wait a little bit of time until these kind of changes have actually taken place and then measure the impact on them in the community. But I agree with Mayor Proton Hen, that it is important to measure and benchmark so that you have a comparison, you have a sense of public perception. That is here because it's an important management tool. It's how we manage and how we know what we're doing. You know, what gets measured gets managed, and that's why this is such an important element.
In light of those comments, then, I expect us to have a new police chief and a new fire chief on board by July. So I have conduct survey in June. I would probably push that out at least till the latter part of July, if not in August.
That would give me.
Unless you have any concerns over that. Pardon me?
Councilmember Nancy.
I mean, I guess I tend more towards what Nancy was saying. Personally, I think it's not going to, the needle's not going to change all that much from the last time, because I think we do provide excellent services to our residents. I think the residents by far, or, you know, by and large, are happy with what we do. And, you know, this year, we have to focus on the bottom line here, the budget. And we're talking about jobs. People are going to lose jobs. I'll say it now. And so, you know, we have to be very careful. It's always, it's an incremental thing. I'm guilty of it just as well. So I'll take my share of the burden here. But I think we just really need to sharpen our pencil here this year and, you know, be a little careful about these $30,000, $50,000 wants.
I would just say, I don't know that this is the right document to make budget decisions because this is going to come back, and we'll have a yea or nay decision on authorizing the contract for this survey. So I suspect that at that point in time, given the budget situation, we'll have an opportunity to weigh in on the budget front.
I realize. I thought we were just kind of giving direction here, and I'm saying that's where my direction is headed, not just on this issue, but on probably virtually every issue we look at this year.
Councilmember Daigle?
I would make the point, because we did have a really vigorous Finance Committee meeting yesterday, that the direction that the city manager is going is very much in tandem, at least with the members of the Finance Committee. So what's being proposed really has solid support in terms of the direction going. One of the items that I really appreciate a lot is what the Chamber of Commerce had brought up, and that is that as proposals come before the council for new regulation, that we do do an economic analysis and that we do look at any impacts to jobs and so on. And then also, as far as some of these issues with the reuse, for example, Bellboa Peninsula and Lido, I think there's a lot of merit in hiring consultants. And I know in my district, when we were considering the reuse of areas around Conexton, that it was very valuable to have a professional that was going to be really knowledgeable about what the market would be able to support. And I think sometimes there can be a lot of pie in the sky planting, and the market doesn't accept it, and it just doesn't materialize. So I would encourage that when we go in the direction of evaluating reuse, that we bring in those professional resources that I think can get us solutions that would be effective for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Hen?
Well, just to follow on on that, that was one of the items that I wanted to comment about, and it's also a follow-on to a prior discussion here. The plan here, in light of the, sort of, the staff resource time constraints that we've got and the budget constraints, I am moving forward to identify private funding sources for these professionals to help with this process. And I'm pretty confident that I'll be able to achieve that working with private parties in the Bellboa Village area. And I'm not as confident, but still am going to try for the same thing here for a planning vision exercise led by an outside consultant for the Lido Marina Village area, too. And so I'm moving in that direction, and I think it's very consistent with the times that we're in, that private parties that want to move things forward through the city ought to be willing to step up. If they think it's really important, they ought to be willing to step up with some money and resources to help the city move it forward faster. So I really think that's a good solution. I did have a couple of other questions regarding this. If council will indulge me to just, I think we can move through these pretty quickly here. On the harbor fee situation, I was concerned that.
Help me out with the page there.
I'm sorry, it's page four of the spreadsheet that you've got here. This would be the item number five, harbor fees. I think it's going to be awfully tough to move that budget, that whole process forward in time for the budget presentation. I hope you can be successful with that, but that's going to be tough, I think.
Mayor Proton Hen, my proposal, and it's not very well articulated here, is to at least increase those fees that are routinely increased by CPI and could be but haven't, and adjust those by CPI, and then overlay that later on with an adjustment based on an appraisal.
I see. Okay.
You know, on that, didn't we talk about it at our priorities meeting, that we were like in March or something on that? Two, three months, I think you said? So is that being pushed back now?
No. Well, we had our first stakeholder meeting last week. The Finance Director held that with Chris Miller. I need to get back with her and double-check the rest of the calendar. I thought I was hoping we were going to have an appraisal running in March. I don't know if we'd have implementation by then, but, actually, I think you're right, Councilmember Rosansky, so it is slipping. Thus, the CPI adjustment.
Okay. I mean, these are the, quite honestly, these, instead of, and I hate to digress to the other thing, instead of customer satisfaction surveys, this is what we need to be working on. This is what staff needs to focus on, because this is going to generate revenue for the city. These fees should have been raised years ago. All right? I mean, we're talking about, we need money for dredging in the harbor. Where's that going to come from? Well, these harbor fees will pay for that dredging, or could potentially. But, I mean, we're pushing this thing out. It just seems to slip and slip and slip. So my feeling is if we're focusing on things, this is what we should be focusing. We should have been doing it two years ago that should have been done, a year ago that should have been done. The way it's looking now, it's going to be a year from now before it gets done. So that's my two cents worth on harbor fees.
Mr. Hen, you want to finish up here?
All right. Yes. On page, I can't read the number. Page six, I guess, item number five on customer service. Actually, this is an item that I think probably could wait because if we're going to be showing leadership on customer service, which I think is important, we ought to have a pretty good idea of who the leaders are in the city staff department by department who will be leading the charge for us and setting the example for customer service. And so I'm wondering if that is one, and I note that you have something here, TBD in terms of resources anyway, I'm wondering if that's one that could slip until some time period after you've got your reorganization stabilized. And.
Possibly. The, I think one step that I know is important to the mayor and to all of you is better and quicker response times to emails and phone calls. So we're already... already trying to bring that to the organization more thoroughly.
Well, there, there may be some things like that, that you can do by fiat that aren't, you know, but, but this whole, to really truly improve customer service, it takes training and--
Yeah.
Example-setting and constant attention, and I'm, I'm not certain that you can go much beyond some of those items, you know, until you've got a stable organization.
But I would not want to take it off of our list of action items as part of our value statement. I think it's an important statement of where we're going and what we're trying to do.
I agree with that. I agree with that. I'm just suggesting that maybe that's, that's an item to defer while we work on things that may be of higher import to the city right now. And then on item number eight, the general plan, it's under, this is page seven, item number eight, general plan, it says, adopt new zoning code to be determined, is, I'm not trying to be a smart allocator, I mean, I mean, are we really at sea about when the timing of that is?
That may have been an editing error, so we'll let David or Sharon offer some thoughts there.
No, 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 I'm talking two columns to the left. It says, adopt new zoning code--
Mayor, I'm sorry, that is a mistake, no.
What would you like to commit to, Mr. Lee?
We were committing--
We're writing it down.
Yes.
What's that?
October. I mean, we heard you loud and clear. You said, finish the thing this year, and if you look at our detail of hours, you see the number of hours are in zoning code, because we got the message, and we're going to have--
Has the council subcommittee signed off on that? No?
We haven't, we haven't seen the revised code yet.
That is on its way. I know we had hoped for February 1, but, you know, we've got some other departments that have been a great help, and we've got all the city attorney's comments now.
When is our next meeting, anyway?
We haven't scheduled one. We said we'd let you know. We're figuring the public draft will be out by March 1, if not sooner, and we said we would advise you when the next committee meeting is.
And then, and then to follow on, is there something else, David?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the city manager said.
I'm surprised that we didn't, there's no mention of the coastal implementation plan in here. Is that because that's really, did I just miss it?
Mr. Mayor and council, if you look on the staff hours on the attached report for staff hours by planning department activity 2010, you will see, we've given you, under the advanced planning, and that's where--
It's right under the housing element.
Oh, I'm sorry, housing?
Well, it's right, it's the one right under the housing element, and we're showing the hours picking up in May, but the reason that it isn't called out specifically on the line on the, the first attachment is because that column shows the 2010 outcome, and we don't intend, don't think that there's any chance of having it certified this year.
It's a 2011, okay, all right. Okay. And then, as we got deeper into the document here, it seemed that we began to trail off on our, our sufficient resources judgments.
We had insufficient resources to continue that column.
Well, it, it seems to be, because I noticed beginning on about page 12, there's a lot of blanks in there about whether or not there's sufficient resources. We did, we even ran out of TBDs for the column, and so--
This is in part my fault, Mr. Hen. We, yeah, we just, the review was getting a little bit deep by the time we got to addenda filing time, so.
I've been there. It gets late at night and harder to keep the determination up, but what, what, what do these blanks mean, I guess? That's my real question.
They mean that to, to be filled in, so let me, I'll return this to you, and actually, I probably just put it on the website with an email to you and to interested public with updates to those columns, and then you folks can comment as you'd like, and especially when it comes back on a quarterly basis.
Well, I think it is significant, because there's a lot of blanks here, and one of the things that we worry about is whether or not there's enough staff resource, management resource, to tackle all of these things, and so I'll be interested to see that update.
Okay. I appreciate that concern, too. That's important to us.
I was a little surprised on page 15, under the Oasis Center, that we need new funds for staffing and some FF and E.
Yeah, Mr. Hen, remember that with Oasis, all of the, the costs associated with the construction of the project are encumbered and, and set. What Laura is referring to here is, we do need to come back to you in the FY 11 budget document with a staffing plan, because it will be a more robust building and more elements that will require the staffing and supervision. I don't, I, when she's talking about some FF and E, do you know what that refers to? Because some is covered.
Because I, I thought, I thought we provided for FF and E in the building costs.
Yeah, I think we have a budget for FF and E, but I think Laura's anticipating, there might be some confusion there, some--
Maybe staffing itself. We'll clarify that.
Well, I think it's more like M and O items. You know, FF and E typically, we look at it's, you know, those are desks and chairs, and she's thinking more along the lines of wastepaper baskets and office equipment and things like that, maybe some new computers and things like that that haven't been, that probably come out of her M and O budget, but she wasn't sure if she could make that work.
Okay.
We're going to look at that some more.
Again, I'd, I'd be anxious, I'd be anxious to see your amended report that has some of these blanks dealt with, because there are a number of projects here that I think are important, and I'll be anxious to see.
Okay.
That's all the questions.
Does any member of the public have any comment on the goals for the council for 2010? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt these goals as, as indicated from our retreat?
I will make the motion--
Thank you.
--to adopt the goals as indicated by our retreat.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is motion to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions to reconsider? Seeing none, we are adjourned.